...off the side of the car, off the side of the road. He climbed down off the car and went off the side of the road and grabbed our salami, and we never saw him again.
There was your lunch?
There was our lunch.
Yeah, no kidding.
But he would not get off the car until we threw that salami to him.
I'm just saying a salami.
Yeah, it was a tough choice, you know.
For you or the bear?
Yeah. I think this is all we're going to get.
Looks at one.
We got one more?
No, I said it looks at one.
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we do have a quorum. How are you, Allison? Good, good. You all recovered and feeling better?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, you didn't?
My husband's got it. And he had a blow. Not as he was talking about it, but yeah, luckily.
Excellent.
I escaped them. And I haven't been very happy. And in the wild, it was so bad, it was probably, it was, it was, it was, it was, that we just didn't want to. Thankful.
All right, the time now is seven o'clock. This is the regular meeting of the Meridian Township Planning Commission. As Chair, I'll call the meeting to order. Let's start with a roll call. Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Shrewsbury.
Here.
Commissioner Richards is absent today. Chair Blumer is here. Commissioner Trisise.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
And Commissioner Cordill.
Here.
And we also have an absence by Commissioner Primo, but there is a, there is a quorum, so the meeting will continue. First of all, we'll see if we have members of the public present, do any of you wish to address us before we get to the specific topic that you're interested in? No, all right. The record should otherwise reflect that there's no, nobody here for the public remarks. So the next item is item four on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Cordill, seconded, seconded by Commissioner Snyder. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
All right. There are no nays, the agenda is approved. Next is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, which was July 11. The, the meeting after that was canceled due to not having a quorum. So approval of the minutes, is there any comment on the prior minutes? Commissioner Cordill.
I spotted a typo on page three of the minutes. It is under number nine, other business, and A, and towards the bottom of that, there's a typo. It's supposed to be pursued.
Well, we could fund it, we could purse it. It could be first. Yeah. Are there any other comments to the previous minutes? Or corrections? No? Then are there?
Do approve?
Moved by Commissioner Trisise, is there a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McConnell. All in favor of approving the prior minutes, say aye.
Aye.
There is no nay, therefore the prior minutes of the July 11 meeting are approved. Next, we have communications. Are there any communications?
There are none.
No communications, so we move on to item seven, which is public hearings. First item on the agenda is rezoning 2022-10, the RRA zone deletion.
Brought this up to you at your last meeting and asked for a public hearing to be scheduled tonight. That has been done. Rather than getting into the details of the staff report, I'm going to kind of talk about, while these are separate public hearings, I can't help but talk about the rezoning and the text amendment, you know, together. So I'll just kind of tell you how it's gone. We did get half a dozen phone calls, and they were all curious in nature, not adversarial in the least. Once it was explained that no new development was going to happen because of this rezoning, and no effect on property taxes was going to be had, everyone seemed okay with it. We did reach out to the landowners whose phone numbers we could get, we could find. We left three voicemails, I spoke to one person, that was the Ethel Court property owner. Once I explained that to them, they were fine with it as well. The phone call, we did get one email that was curious about the rezoning itself, not about a specific property. All six people called in reference to the Ethel Court property, so I'm glad that went well. We have not heard from any of the other landowners themselves. So it's not, this has not been a controversial rezoning application. It's exactly what we said before, there are six parcels on Van Natta, one on the northwest corner of Ethel Court and Cornell Road. The Van Natta parcels are out of conformance with the current lot size standards for RRA zoning district anyway. The rezoning would bring five of those six into conformance for lot size. There's also issues with lot width, two of them would be brought into conformance, the rest would be brought toward conformance. While the Ethel Court property doesn't have a problem with either of those, it, it's, it's also not going to have a problem with the RRA zoning, and as I said before, it's no, it's not going to be any effect on the land uses or the assessment on the property at all. In all cases, the side setback is lessened by five feet, so there's a little bit of, actually a little bit of benefit to the landowners in regard to that. The rear setback and the, and the front setbacks are unchanged. And honestly, I, I think I kind of went into a little detail last month, I can answer any questions, but we do recommend approval of this. It does conform with our master plan recommendation of consolidating districts. It brings lots into conformance and takes, you know, brings them out of that legal non-conforming status should happen, something happen to their properties. It doesn't have any effect, and I, I cleared this through, this isn't just me, I cleared this through the township assessor, there's no effect on any of their property values. It's not going to open the door to any new development in the township, it just, it just makes everything fit nicely.
And these two blocks of property are the only two that are affected by the change?
That is correct, there are seven parcels, that is all.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Cordill?
It just seems like a good housekeeping sort of thing to do, to have it, to get them into conformance.
Agreed.
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's going to be a sound real quick.
It's okay.
Okay, we're good now.
I have one sort of philosophical question. I pointed this proposed amendment out to a member of the community, and they were making their way through the staff report, which is pretty comprehensible for those of us who read them.
Correct.
But it's, can be challenging for average members of the public. And one of the things that I think people sometimes, oftentimes stumble on is the fact that the master plan carries a set of designations, and the zoning ordinance carries another. And I think people often wonder, is that on purpose, or is that an accident, is it something that could or should be fixed? So I'm kind of, within the planning profession, is it common to have different designations to help differentiate when you're talking about a master plan, future vision versus a zoning ordinance?
There is. The master plan is meant to be more general in nature, that's why on page two, you see table one, that's directly out of the master plan. So for example, the R2 residential future land use designation fits with the RRA, R triple A, R double A, and the RA zoning districts. And that's a point that I made, is you're, even with this zone change, you're, it's still within the same future land use designation. Now, neither one of these are that designation, but it's not making it more, it's not making that particular, I don't see a problem, but make, we issue worse. So it is common practice. I had a community early on in my career that insisted they had to make them exactly the same, and it was, it was problematic, because no one understood if you were talking about future land use. I mean, they made, they made the district names the same, and no one understood if you're talking about future land use or zoning.
I appreciate the table you've presented there, it really does lay out nicely how each of the future land use categories are basically a bucket of current zoning.
Right.
And simplifying a bucket is, makes it easier to navigate.
And of course, you know, later on the agenda, there is a, you know, we are going over our letter of intent to plan, so we're kind of starting that conversation, if, if there's, you know, there'll be room for discussion on how to designate future land use, if we wanted a little bit more specificity, but I would not recommend one for one, district for district.
Thank you.
I also have a philosophical bent to approve what you're trying to do here, and that is, a lot of the, a lot of the government that I have seen on a township level is overly confusing and overlapping and excessively detailed. I commend the sign ordinance revisions that we've seen, the primary goal of which was to strip away redundancy and utter confusion in some cases, and I think this is along the same lines. It's, it's an unnecessary and unused provision, it's in there solely for the purpose of confusing people, and I think removing it is a benefit to everybody.
Thank you. Of course, this is two different public hearings and two different motions, but philosophically, the, if you're, if you're going to do the rezoning and you don't do the text amendment, you're leaving it out there, just, you know, there's, what's the point? And then vice versa. So the comments are the same.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions for the presentation? Are we ready for a vote then?
No, we need a motion.
Is there a motion to approve the?
I, you cannot make a motion tonight without suspending your rules. We anticipate bringing a resolution for each one of these back next week.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, all right, then let's take a straw vote. Let's do this together rather than as separate, I don't, should we do them separately here? All right, let's do them together. All those in favor of amending the zoning ordinances to remove RRA?
And the specific rezoning.
And the specific rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? There is none. Thank you for the presentation.
Of course.
All right, so we are now on unfinished business, item eight, special use permit 22-071, the Butterflies Group Child Care Unit.
This one you can vote on. We had a public hearing for special use, for the special use permit you just referred to at your meeting on July 11th. Planning Commission raised no major concerns at that time and agreed to consider a resolution to approve the special use permit to operate a group childcare home for up to 12 children at 2149 Quarry Road at its next meeting, which this is. Since that meeting, we've received no other comment from neighbors, so it is as it was.
And as I recall, we had a straw vote that approved the request.
Yes, you did.
All right. Then is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I would make that motion to approve.
All right, moved by Commissioner Cordill, is there a second? Commissioner McConnell seconds it. All those in favor of approving?
Should be roll call.
Oh, roll call, you're right, I apologize. So let's start off with Commissioner Cordill.
Um, aye.
Commissioner Trisise.
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Shrewsbury.
Aye.
Commissioner Snyder.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion passes. Congratulations, folks.
Thank you.
All right, we are now on item nine, which is master plan notice of intent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the first step under Michigan law for a community to begin the master planning process, whether it's a five-year update or a 40-year update. The first step under the law that was passed in 2008 to consolidate all the planning enabling acts, there was previously a county enabling act, and a township enabling act, and a city village enabling act. One of the things that was added was this notice of intent. So what we do at this point is, this letter goes out to, in our case, all the surrounding jurisdictions, the county board of commissioners, because we do not have a county planning commission here, the tri-county regional planning authority, commission, tri-county regional planning commission, Capitol area transit authority is our duly designated transit group, and all of the utilities that operate within the township. Consumers, water, light technically, does exist within the township, and the, we will reach out to, although it's a little unclear as to whether or not it's required, we will reach out to the fiber optic providers as well, to get their input. This is, as I said, the first step in many. We will, at the next meeting, bring forward a rough schedule, a rough timeline of what we anticipate here, and how, start rolling this ball down the hill. Well, get it up the hill first, and then we'll get it back down the hill. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this specific piece, but we would recommend the planning commission move to approve this, and we will work with Mr. Primo to get his signature, because as Assistant Planner Chapman reminded me, the secretary is responsible for sending out all the correspondence.
So the, the motion would be to approve the letter of intent?
Yes.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Trisise, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Shrewsbury. All in favor of approving this letter, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, just a quick note, I don't know if this is a typo or not, but in that letter, one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, unless you object that method of distribution, object that, or maybe object to that method, I don't know how much that really matters, but I just wanted to point that out.
No, that's a good point.
And aye.
Correction will be deemed as a friendly correction.
Yeah.
Since this is just the first step, we didn't need a roll call. No, I didn't think so.
No, this is just, just a letter we're sending now.
All right, there are no, no nays, so the letter of intent is approved by the commission.
With the recommended edit.
I'm sorry, wait.
With the recommended edit.
Yeah, with the, with the friendly edit. All right. The sign ordinance update, item 9B.
So thank you again, Mr. Chair, we wanted to get this in front of you now, with the caveat that the township attorneys are in process of reviewing it. But we wanted to get in front of you now, because this is, I'll go ahead and say it's the largest overhaul of an ordinance you're going to see for some time, at least until we bring in the parking ordinance in a couple of months. This touches the entire sign ordinance. This will, this will amend every single section, including the section that we split off about municipal signage and approved last two months ago. The subcommittee did an excellent job on helping guide this and giving us feedback on certain things, and what we should need to focus on, and areas that needed to be improved. The township attorney is specifically looking into our treatment of temporary signs, which is the big thing that everyone struggles with. They are going to provide us with some language for flags, because the, at my recommendation, the subcommittee pulled out the flag language at the last meeting, because I just wasn't comfortable with where it was at, but I didn't want to hold up the rest of it on that one issue. And there's a couple of other areas they're looking at, but they will provide us with some comments here in the next few weeks. But I wanted to get this in front of you, so you could start absorbing it now, because it's a lot. Commissioner Richards' recommendation, we've not only strike through, we've highlighted the changes as well. And so just, not that any of them are less important than others, but the green ones are the most important. Because those are the ones that are functional changes in some way, that, that, that it changes the way we're doing business now. The gray stuff is just literally stripping out the content, stripping out the duplicative information, the blue is clarification, or just moving it from somewhere else to make it work better. The green are the things that are really changing how this ordinance functions. And so getting down to changes in size, changes in height, changes in location, changes in how we do temporary signage, it's things like that. And so we just wanted to get this in front of you this evening, so you could start to digest it. We will get the township attorney's comments as soon as possible and pass those along, along with any revisions that we need to make. We're shooting for a public hearing in September on this, so we can get this rolling. The idea being that it will go into effect just after the election, because we are not going to change the rules on temporary signs a month before the election. That, it's tough enough as it is, so we're going to wait until just after the election to formally get this into place. So I'd be happy to answer any questions now, but I, I had no plans on having a large conversation about this this evening, I just needed to get it out to the remainder of the planning commission that hadn't already seen it.
Any questions or comments?
Is there a preferred way for?
To submit comments on it?
At this point, what I would suggest is to shoot, shoot staff an email, so we can look into it. First off, we can decide whether it's something we've already have an answer to, that we talked about this with the subcommittee, or we talked about this internally.
All right.
And then secondly, if it's something we need to, we can run up the flagpole to the township attorney at this point.
Will do.
But please, send them along if you have anything.
In your experience, do township attorneys ever appear before the planning commission?
They haven't here since I've been on here, but they certainly could, if we had particular questions about them, I'm sure.
Yeah, if, if they have any significant issues with what's, with what you've got there, may I suggest that we should have, invite the township attorneys to one of our hearings.
Absolutely, let me, let me see what they come up with.
It might be nice to have them here for the public hearing, at any rate, to answer questions if there's some from the public that come in.
Yeah, and, and you don't want to go through all this and then find out that somebody's going to sue over the US Supreme Court case.
We did, we, in our conversations with them, the most recent case that came through in the last term actually is to our benefit, it helps us out a little bit in terms of the, what we can and can't do with those temporary signs, but yes, it's, it's still an evolving area of litigation in the United States.
Yeah. All right, so if I understand, then nothing is actually required on this issue?
Nothing is required, we just wanted to get this in front of you, start getting your feedback, so please email me, call, I'll buy you a cup of coffee if you have any questions, but this is where it's headed, by and large.
And any of us who might be colorblind are at a distinct disadvantage.
My apologies, I did run into that with one of our attorneys that's working on this. Happy to walk you through it.
Oh gee.
And we can also just give you a straight, a straight strike-through copy as well, I do have that.
Good. All right, I appreciate the, I'm sorry.
So what you're saying is, is the blue is more housekeeping, moving stuff around?
Copyediting.
Copyediting.
Yep.
Wordsmithing, but the green is what's the substantive changes?
Correct. And it's not that the gray isn't substantive, but the gray is largely dealing with those content-based.
Right.
Regulations, so that kind of has to happen whether you like it or not.
Yes, I understand that, so you don't have to read the sign to decide whether it's legal.
Correct. Easiest way to say it.
Yep.
Any further comments on this issue?
Yeah, I would like to compliment staff, Brian and you, and others that have worked on this, as well as the committee, this, this is a major effort, and it's going to take, what, about 15, 20 pages of sign ordinance down to six?
It is going to substantially cut it down, yeah. And, and one of the things you'll see in almost every ordinance I bring forward, we're going to cut up, we're going to get rid of all the other references too, because every time we have a reference somewhere else, you got to amend it every time we change it over here, so that kind of stuff drives me a little batty.
Well, this stuff's been allowed to grow over the last 30 years, and it just builds on itself and grows and creates confusion and contradiction.
Almost 50 years, I think.
50 years since?
1974 was last major overhaul of our zoning ordinance, until 2022.
Okay. Well, thank you.
So the television on Neon has been there for four years?
It's probably been there the entire time, yep. I, I can't tell you that for certain, because that's in one of the sections that's been slightly amended.
Okay.
But I, I'm willing to, because usually what happens on stuff like this, is if one community does it, it gets copied over to other communities, and almost everybody has that Neon language. It's, it, stuff like that rings a bell to a planner that's read a couple of ordinances, oh yeah, I've seen this one before.
Well, thank you, that represents a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
All right, then we are now on item 10A, Township Board Update.
Just a couple of quick updates I wanted to, to give to the planning commission, the township board appreciates all the work that you've done over the course of the summer with all these small ordinance amendments that are really quality of, the quality of life amendments, as we call them. They did, finally, they did adopt for final approval the last set of them, which were the municipal sign ordinance, the traffic impact study changes, and the changes to regulate pods and dumpsters, which was very timely, because we ended up getting two calls, complaints, complaining about pods the week it was up for final adoption. So it proven that, you know, there needs to be at least some basic guardrails in place. They also did approve at their most recent meeting, the proposal from Jim Jagair, Jagair Holmes, for the Natslaugh Farm property on Hullett Road, so that is moving forward as well. Be happy to answer any other questions, they are extremely busy with a lot of things right now.
Could I go back to a couple items, as long as we got the director here? The notice of intent that we approved this evening is kind of for the outreach that we're required and would like to do with our surrounding communities. I presume we'll hear next time about sort of the in-reach, how we engage the community in the process, and I'm especially thinking about neighborhoods, so really interested in your thoughts on how we can best do that.
What about the Neon sign?
Neon signs. Yeah, absolutely, we're, we'll give you some initial feedback, but we're also looking to the planning commission and township board to help us here. These are the things where, when you're in your neighborhoods, you're in, like, to get the feedback. We're also, a lot of groups have their annual meetings towards the end of the year, so we're getting to be annual meeting time, which, perfect opportunity. I only did one last year, but I'm certainly open to talking to more people that aren't friends of mine that wanted to invite me to their neighborhood meeting.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any liaison reports?
Yeah, I've got a couple of them. We had the EDC meeting last week, and they are exploring some sort of a business card access program. They did it a couple of years ago for the holidays to encourage shopping in our local stores where they supplemented, so you bought a $40 card, and you, or you paid $40 at the store, and you got a $50 card. So they're looking into that possibly for this fall during the construction, to help some of those businesses out in particular, and then maybe another in, in December or November for the holiday season. It would be in partnership with the Michigan Associate, or Meridian Association of Business, MABA, and so they're still working on some of those details. It's a supplement, maybe $3,000, $4,000 from the EDC to, for their shot, and then more from MAB, and it'll help, we hope we get the customers back to some of our landlocked businesses especially, that are really suffering with this construction. And then the BRA met last week and approved for recommendation to the township board 2.7 million in brownfields grants to the Haslett Village building, and most of that would be actually recouped from state taxes if the township goes forward, and essentially freezes taxes for a period of time. So that would get them cleaning up that site and ready to go for the apartments. It also completely cleans up some of the, where the dry cleaner was.
Let me stop you for a second, the dry cleaner's a separate issue, but the brown, the, at the apartment.
Yes.
Is there a designated brown, brownfield area?
It's within the PICA, and it's with, it's for, I mean, they've done the analysis, there's asbestos in there, there's the, the former dry cleaner, and some other sites that they've located, assessed, and ready to go. As far as the dry cleaner, they're actually going to remove all of the contaminated soil so they don't have to have special air handling disposals, so it will actually be cleaned up fully at that point, so. They're moving ahead, they hope to, I think, start construction late this year, or actually demolition late this year, and see where they go, depending on if they get the funding all set.
Pretty good.
That's my report from those two.
I like the idea of that, of that donor card for the businesses, because some of them have got to be hurting badly.
Well, some of them you can't get to, essentially, like the pet supply store and the bread store there, and you've got to go through the neighborhood and hide back through there, and people.
And if you miss the car off on the road, you got to go all the way around and try it again.
Oh yeah, and there's this big sign says, don't drive through the neighborhood to get around the, the detour, and that's the only way to get to some of those places, so.
Catch 22.
Yeah, it is, so. So they were looking at, at helping out our local.
Excellent.
Stores.
Any other liaison reports? The Downtown Development Authority skipped its meeting this. The Downtown Development Authority skipped its meeting this month. The only thing that happened was they submitted their annual report, which we don't need to worry about. It's all numbers.
Yeah, the Environmental Commission met on August 3rd, continuing to work on revisions to our climate sustainability plan. This month, the focus was mainly on wetlands and strengthening our wetland protection ordinance, but also increasing our outreach to members of the community, contractors, and others who are impacting our wetlands.
Rose Lake is not in our jurisdiction.
No.
The Corridor Improvement Authority was supposed to meet in July, but it did not because of a lack of quorum. I am just wondering if I could institute maybe an exception to our agenda. In some communities I've seen where commissioners can bring up planning-related issues that maybe aren't specifically laid out. With respect to, with all the road construction, I am a frequent user of Dobie Road, as we fondly call it, the Okamis Road alternate. And I think what makes it more trying is because Dobie and Hamilton Light and Dobie and Grand River Lights are not synced. You get through one, and then you get stopped at the other. So it's almost going down to Forest Hills Drive because the traffic just can't move. I think it would aid things, I know you're talking about two different agencies here, state and county, but it just does not, being an alternate, it's busy anyway, but being an alternate, it just has that much traffic on it so that if those two lights could be sequenced to work together, I think you'd see a lot better improvement on the traffic situation and a little more courtesy on drivers' cars.
You learned some new words, is that...
Yeah.
Yeah, and other gestures, that's right. No, you were number one, right?
We will, yeah, we have a standing meeting with M.D.O.N. with regard to the Grand River project, and so we'll bring it up with them on Thursday. And I will try and circle back to the county tomorrow or Wednesday and see what we can do. The M.D.O.N. has indicated whatever they need to do to make it happen on stuff like this, they'll work with the locals.
Funny, we all thought the protected left turn on Grand River was a good thing. That just screws everything up, because the light is much longer for the protected left. So you just can't get through there in reasonable time. No, I don't doubt that, but the timing is bad.
Right. Do we know how long, is it towards the end of the year that this arrangement's going to be where Dobie is the Okamis Road alternate?
I do not have a timeline that I can provide to you right now.
That's okay. I just was one, because if we have months ahead of us, it's worthwhile to pursue.
You have months ahead of you. I will follow up with M.D.O.N. and the county on a line.
I know the Transportation Commission met on July 21st. I was not in town. So my plan is to watch that meeting and then report back to you guys in two weeks, if that's okay. We got in very late, well, early morning Thursday, after some delays, so I'm a little behind on a lot of things. So if you could grant me that courtesy, I'm really appreciative.
Certainly. I hope you had a wonderful trip.
It was great. I never knew that lakes could be as blue as the ones that I saw in Banff. It was incredible.
What was the temperature like when you went there?
It was pretty good. It was really warm for the places that we were in, but I mean, we generally enjoyed it, except at night, because nobody has air conditioning, because, you know, a couple decades ago, nobody was planning for this kind of weather and climate change and all of that.
Pacific Northwest was breaking all kinds of records while you were out there.
Yeah, yeah, it was warm. We were sweating on some of our hikes. That's okay, though.
Any other reports? All right, we are now on item 11, project updates. Any new applications? Do we have any site plans received or site plans approved? The record, we have no public remarks, do we?
Okay. I guess this is a good place to bring this up. Couple days ago, we got the Michigan Township Magazine as an aside. I did contact them. They're now going to be addressed to you. Chair Blumer, I'll bring them down to you. I noticed that was in error. This wasn't on either of our radars. We didn't see this coming. The state has passed a piece of legislation. We're going to have to update our ordinance. This does not affect the special use permit today. Family group homes can now go up to, family group daycares can now go up to seven, and group daycares can now go up to 14. And you'll be seeing an amendment to our zoning ordinance to reflect that next. We have to get on that pretty quick.
But we approved them to go up to 12.
That is correct.
If they wanted to go up to 14, do they need reapproval?
I have asked them not to do that. That was the conversation out there, like, I will let you know when we update the ordinance.
So just to add to the little flavor to that, the law that went into effect, actually, there's a period of time that they have to be pretty much perfect operators under their license. So we probably aren't going to see the effects of this for some time into the future. We're still trying to look into what all it means, but it's clear at a minimum, if you're only doing seven, you're functionally exempt, and we at least need to amend for that. The question of the special use permit is something we've got to take into a little bit.
I speak to that just from my work, my day job work with the Department of Education, that, I mean, there are families, particularly after COVID, that are really struggling with access to childcare. And so the intent of the change was to try to minimize some of those disruptions for families and make it a little bit easier to find quality childcare. So hopefully, we can work to make sure that accommodates at our end too, because I know that's a big issue for families still.
It was before the pandemic. I mean, quality daycare is very difficult to find.
So anything, I mean, you have to balance the need for safety for children and quality, but this seemed like a change that could potentially offer a little bit of flexibility and a little room to make more centers available or more places for families.
I was just curious, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but the homes aren't necessarily any larger, the play area, I don't know if they're any larger. What was the one we heard tonight, wasn't it 12,500 square feet?
Oh, no.
What was the lot area? I mean, I'm just...
Lot area, yeah, something like that, I'm sorry.
No, not the home.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was...
No, you're fine.
Yeah, something like that. I didn't give you the exact number. I've got the file here.
Would that be for new?
Yeah, 12,632 square feet is the size of the lot, yeah.
Okay. Would this affect new applications, or would it affect...
We need to fully analyze it and understand how it affects our approvals going forward still.
Just an interesting observation, you know, the physical aspects aren't necessarily changing. I'm not denying...
They're not, yep. I philosophically agree with you.
I mean, personally, if it were me and my husband, I can't imagine us watching 14 children. 12 would be...
I stopped at one.
It speaks to the desperation of the situation, and I agree with you. It's not ideal in the slightest.
So, anyway, just...
You can't tie them down anymore, so...
It reminds me of something my mom sent me the other day about like child safety restraints in like the 50s in vehicles. It's pretty funny, like hammocks that you can string off the back of your car for your child. I was like, that's a slingshot.
Anything further? I believe then that we are on the last item, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner McConnell, second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.